At seven thirty in the dawn, Masters gives up. That was great. I would like to call the public hearing on both items one and two of our agenda to order. Then I actually would allow Mrs. Ames to give, to lead the proceedings.
Thank you for the question. We have two items tonight up for public hearing as required by Ohio Revise Code. And these address items number one and two on our agenda tonight. The first public hearing is to establish a revitalization district within the city of Chillicothe pursuant to Ohio Revise Code Section 4301 E1. And we have discussed this, council has discussed this, we've had committee meetings. I think everyone's pretty much aware of what this entails. It is to designate an area in the downtown historic district, near that historic district. And it gives us the ability to, for one thing, get more liquor licenses for restaurants, not for bars, for restaurants, to encourage restaurants that want to be in the downtown. And we have seen different restaurants that have opened up as the Carlisle has been a catalyst for, and so we expect more to do this. This is something that has been done in several cities, Marietta, Worcester, they have had very good response from this, and I have had no, no opposition to this whatsoever. I've had numerous people ask me about it, and once they were told what it is, they have been very pleased that we're moving forward with something like this. So at this time, any questions anybody has of the revitalization district? And this is, this would be a zoning, a change, so this would go in our ordinance as under the zoning. The second item is number two, number two on our agenda, and this is to, it's more of a clarification really, but it's changing the language in the, in the ordinance, but this is something, it's to make residential a permitted use on other than street level in the historic district. Cities developed over time with businesses on the street level and the owners living above. And that has been always, since cities began, residential living downtown on other than street level is what our cities are based on. And so it was always just kind of accepted that this was a, this was a use for, but our zoning does not specifically say this. So what we are doing is, Carrie Rowland from the Law Director's Office helped me with the verbiage to get this just right. It's just making clarified what's already in existence, and not just in our town, but most towns in the United States. It was interesting to note that the different zoning that I checked, different cities, a lot of them don't have this specific clause in, but it's for any future development downtown, it would assist in financing to make sure that something doesn't get approved and then find out you can't do it after all. So it would help business development too in that regard. And again, I've had no, no negative opinions expressed. People have asked what, why this needed to be put in, and it was put in because of the Carlisle in particular, that the financing institution wanted this language in to make sure that it was protecting them so that the Carlisle could be revitalized. So again, I'll open up for questions on that.
Anybody from the public have any questions or want to make any comments on either items in the public hearing?
Okay, I guess so. Thank you.
All right. We will call a public book on both items, John Coost. Okay, now I'd like to call Chillicothe City Council Legislative Meeting to order. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Truttle.
Here.
Tatman.
Here.
Showman.
Here.
Pearl.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Bonner.
Here.
Ames.
Here.
Can I ask everybody to rise? Let's leave.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Did your journal minutes go in hard copy delivered on Friday and electronic copy delivered
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
by our clerk? Bonner.
Yes.
Bonner? Ames.
I'll make a motion to accept the matter.
Yes.
Okay. Minutes are accepted. Accepted by Mr. Pearl. Reports to committees. Mrs. Patrick?
Just to recall, I have something that should be amended on the minutes, page eight
Thank you, President Reinhardt. The Utilities Committee has one item on tonight's agenda. It's item number seven. It's the first reading of ordinance reducing appropriations for the Nina Gardens project.
thirty-six under Old Business.
The Nina Gardens project is a sub-fund, and it received more appropriations than what
It should read water line, this is referring to Haskwood Hills, it should read water
was required for the project. And I would ask Auditor Feeney to explain as much as he wants on this, but I would like
lines in the streets will be replaced first, then paving, and the remaining water lines
to add that this project will be paid off at the end of this year, so it will be done and paid for.
in the yards will replace at a later date.
And at the appropriate time, I would like to ask for the three read rule, especially
It says in the limits that the streets will be paved and then the water lines in the streets
since this is a reduction in appropriations, not an increase. And I would also like to share the status of five committee assignments that the Utilities
will be replaced. That's backwards.
Okay.
Committee asked, a number of fourteen dash eighty-four, is an update of Chapter 359 Junk
Wanted to read where the water lines will be put into the streets prior to paving.
Okay.
and Collector Cars.
Prior to paving.
This is still at the Law Director's Office, and they're working on some suggested changes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Your motion is to conclude the correction, Mr. Bonner?
Item number, or assignment number fourteen dash one oh five is adding a checkoff box
Yes, sir.
for the pool and fireworks donations on the water bills.
Second by Mr. Pearl. Mr. Pearl, we used to the.
This has been tabled until 2015 to allow the new utility billing software which is to be worked out.
Yes, sir.
Number fourteen dash one one nine is appropriating $6,800 to purchase a plug car.
Okay, roll call. Truttle.
Yes.
Tatman.
This was taken out of committee because funds were found within the 2014 budget to pay
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
for this. And its companion ordinance, number fourteen dash one forty, was a reallocation of $5,620 to pay for the plug car. This is also out of committee as Finance Chair Truttle has reallocated these funds. And thank you for doing that. And the last one is assignment number fourteen dash one forty-two. It's creating a stormwater collection fee. This request is being looked into by the committee, still in progress. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Any other reports to committees?
It doesn't.
Mine's short.
Tom pointed you, I was going to point to Tom, so.
I had one item, Safety Service has one item on tonight's agenda. It is item number three, which is a third reading, and is to appropriate $14,889 to cover fire department, vehicle repair, fuel, and insurance costs for the remainder of the calendar year. This was projected number, and we're still trying to see if there is a way to reduce that number. So at the appropriate time, I would ask that we not read item number three.
Make a motion.
Can I make a motion to do that?
Motion not to read item three. Mrs. Patrick, seconds. Roll call.
Truttle.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Okay. Minutes are accepted. Reports to committees. Mrs. Patrick?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. The Utilities Committee has one item on tonight's agenda. It's item number seven. It's the first reading of ordinance reducing appropriations for the Nina Gardens project. The Nina Gardens project is a sub-fund, and it received more appropriations than what was required for the project. And I would ask Auditor Feeney to explain as much as he wants on this, but I would like to add that this project will be paid off at the end of this year, so it will be done and paid for. And at the appropriate time, I would like to ask for the three read rule, especially since this is a reduction in appropriations, not an increase. And I would also like to share the status of five committee assignments that the Utilities Committee asked, a number of fourteen dash eighty-four, is an update of Chapter 359 Junk and Collector Cars. This is still at the Law Director's Office, and they're working on some suggested changes. Item number, or assignment number fourteen dash one oh five is adding a checkoff box for the pool and fireworks donations on the water bills. This has been tabled until 2015 to allow the new utility billing software which is to be worked out. Number fourteen dash one one nine is appropriating $6,800 to purchase a plug car. This was taken out of committee because funds were found within the 2014 budget to pay for this. And its companion ordinance, number fourteen dash one forty, was a reallocation of $5,620 to pay for the plug car. This is also out of committee as Finance Chair Truttle has reallocated these funds. And thank you for doing that. And the last one is assignment number fourteen dash one forty-two. It's creating a stormwater collection fee. This request is being looked into by the committee, still in progress. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Any other reports to committees?
It doesn't.
Mine's short.
Tom pointed you, I was going to point to Tom, so.
I had one item, Safety Service has one item on tonight's agenda. It is item number three, which is a third reading, and is to appropriate $14,889 to cover fire department, vehicle repair, fuel, and insurance costs for the remainder of the calendar year. This was projected number, and we're still trying to see if there is a way to reduce that number. So at the appropriate time, I would ask that we not read item number three.
Make a motion.
Can I make a motion to do that?
Motion not to read item three. Mrs. Patrick, seconds. Roll call.
Truttle.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Okay, item three will not be read. Mr. Truttle?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. The Finance Committee has one item on tonight's agenda, and that's to appropriate $16,000 for income tax refunds. At the appropriate time, I'd like, I will make motion not to read that because these are things that have to be done per the.
You mean waive the rules?
Yes. Waive the rules.
He said not read. Kind of hard to pass out without reading. We knew what you meant, Tom.
Okay. Also, I recently talked about a while back, and it was partially something that I thought we should do. The Treasurer had requested for a backup position, a deputy treasurer per se, and anyhow, I thought it was only proper that the Finance Chair, we had backup, at no cost to the city, could be available to take the jobs while the Treasurer was absent, or sick, or something of that nature. And I do have a draft for that, and I'm going to go with that, and we'll probably have it on the agenda on our next council session. So if we get that in, it'll be a part of the Finance Chair's duties in the future. Thank you. End of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Truttle. Any other reports to committees? Mrs. Ames?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. Development has three items on the agenda tonight. Items one and two, we discussed at the public hearing, so I'm not going to go over those again. I would ask for council's favorable approval on both of those items. Item number four is the first reading of ordinance to appropriate $4,780 to the Housing and Urban Development Community Housing Improvement Program grant. This is a budget adjustment in the CHIP grant from 2012 fund. The balance in the private rehab line was incorrectly carried forward from 2013 to 2014. It should have stayed with the 2012 fund. Those things, those things aren't carried over there, they're kept with the fund. A correction of the amount of $4,780 is needed to pay the remaining bills so that the CHIP fiscal year 2012 grant can be closed out. Does that make sense to everybody? It's just, it was a bookkeeping error. The money was put in this account when it was supposed to be kept with this account, pay those bills and close out. So we're just making adjustment for, to put it back where it belongs. So at the appropriate time, I'll ask to wait for three read rule and pass this tonight so bills can be paid and income closed out. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ames. Any other reports to committees? Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. The Parks and Rec Committee has one item on the agenda tonight. This is a transfer of funds from the Parks and Rec Capital to the Parks and Rec Furniture and Fixtures, and a transfer from Parks and Rec Capital to the Parks and Rec Capital Computer. As you know, we have some insurance, some damage that the insurance paid to the city. So we're going to ask for $770 for a desk and $1,270 for a new computer. And we'll let this go a little bit, since everything's going to wait for an argument. We'll have something on the agenda next week. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Any other reports to committees? Mrs. Neal?
Thank you. City Services has no items on the agenda, but I would like to report on assignment fourteen one twenty-three, that was the purchase of a dump truck dead. We're taking that assignment out of committee. The money has been, is going to be requested in the 2015 budget and paid from, from 2015. So it is out of committee. Thank you.
Any other reports to committees? Okay. Reports of officials? Mayor Iverson?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. I met today with the Fire Department staff and union representation to discuss the adjustments concerning the levees. We signed the document today with the union that reduces the minimum manning from ten to eight per shift. And we also discussed the closure of Stations Three and Four as scheduled for November seventeen. So we just cost-cut benefit from 2014, and we factored in 2015 budget. I'd like to ask council for support on item number one and number two. I think it's important for the development of our downtown and to put the structures in place that will allow for downtown living and downtown livability. So I ask council's support on those two items. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Iverson. Auditor Feeney?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. Touch on a few of the agenda items tonight. Just to follow up on Councilwoman Ames, first reading of item number four. Again, that is essentially a bookkeeping matter. For those HUD CHIP grants, there's no, there's no real savings we can realize. These funds are administered basically separately through city monies. And what happened was the requested amount to be brought forward in 2014 to be spent was not the full amount. So just that, that forty-seven eighty needs to be appropriated so that it can basically close out the cash in that account. I would also support the waiver of three read rule. Item number two, unfortunately, this is a common item this time of year. The original appropriation for income tax refunds was $335,000. This, I'm sorry, item number five. This appropriation will get us through the end of the year and take us into next year. And then, item seven, we talked about some length, just so I could take everybody through the details in the Utilities Committee meeting, but the good news is we are unappropriating, which we rarely do, four hundred some thousand dollars. And we're making sure that appropriations happen to the correct lines to indeed make that final note payment, four hundred some thousand dollars, that'll be paid in December, and essentially close out the need for this Nina Gardens sub-fund. So again, it's essentially a bookkeeping request, and I would also ask for your support of the waiver of three read rule. And then, just one item of note, I think it was probably last year, maybe early this year, when council passed a resolution in opposition to House Bill Five, which is the municipal income tax uniformity legislation, and it must have been, it must have been 2013. And as we followed it, it went from the House, and at the last minute, literally, within the last few hours, there were changes when it went from the House to the Senate that were significantly adverse to most municipalities. The Senate now is likely to vote on that House Bill within the next couple of weeks. Unfortunately for Chillicothe, it looks like our efforts have been in vain. I had a visit from Senator Peterson earlier this week where we talked about, he basically let me know where things were headed. And, you know, I asked him, I knew, Chillicothe's going to be hurt. There are about probably 200 municipalities in our situation, and there's no stopping that now. What I asked him though, was unlike with the loss of local government funds, with the loss of the estate tax, I asked him if there was a way that he could soften the blow for us, because what we're losing, you know, will, again, hit us hard and fast. So I don't think, I don't think my, my request for Chillicothe will be answered, but there's always hope. So anyway, the Senate is expected to move quickly and vote fast here in the next few weeks. I think there will be a lot of things that happen in the lame duck session, and this will be one of them. So keep your fingers crossed that somehow we'll get lucky, but if not, within the next month or so, expect a report on how Chillicothe would be affected with that new legislation.
With that, I conclude my report. Thank you, Auditor Feeney. So, Director?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. I really have anything to report on tonight.
Thank you. From the chair, I would like to note to the public that today, 1775, in a little tavern called Ton Tavern in Philadelphia, the United States Marine Corps was formed and born. So for, just make note of that. One of the few armed services that actually celebrates its birthday every year, and I wish the United States Marine Corps a happy 239th birthday. It's the brave troops in the United States Marine Corps that's helping us to do what we're doing today. And it's weird because it falls on the heels of Veterans Day, tomorrow's Veterans Day, so that'll segue, segue me in to, again, wishing all of our local veterans from the chair in this body, very happy Veterans Day, and give a very heartfelt thank you and appreciation to all of our veterans that are serving today, in all theaters, and that have served in the past, and the ones that have gave, excuse me, the ultimate sacrifice for, for us being the freest and greatest country God's given us on the face of the earth. And we wouldn't be the freest and greatest country on the face of the earth without the brave men and women that served in our, all of our armed forces, the Coast Guard, the Air Force, the Army, the Navy, and last but not least, the United States Marine Corps. So again, as you are out and about tomorrow, you folks that are lucky enough to actually have it as a paid day off, please, as you see people out, the old retired vets that had their hats and coats and then those things on, yeah, please go up and give them a handshake and a pat on the back, and definitely anybody you see in uniform, please give them a thanks, because I can tell you from when I was in, it is very well appreciated. It seems like a small gesture, but those folks really, really do appreciate that when, when the citizens that they're serving come up and, and give thanks for their sacrifices they're making, and also their families, the spouses and the children of the veterans, dad, moms away from home extended periods of time, they miss birthdays, holidays, and those kind of things that we take for granted. So again, on the heels of Veterans Day being tomorrow, again, from the chair in this body, I want to thank every local veteran, every veteran in, in the United States. And a lighter note, I'd like to thank the service crews. Mayor Iverson, if you can pass along, a couple of weeks ago, they actually did some very good patchwork up on Oakwood, Barcliff, and Mr. Rutherford can comment as well, there at the, rolling into Ledgewood, those have been areas that look like they've been hit with mortar fire over the last few years, and a very tough, we've talked about those streets up there that were blue in the face, but the crews spent, got them cleaned out and got those to where, at least right now, nobody's bottoming out and having suspension problems. So Mayor Iverson, please thank the crews, they did a really, really nice job in an area that's not real easy to, to fix or make easy. So. Okay, that's all I have. That will bring us to audience participation. Any member of the audience wish to address the council? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the clerk. Council rules limit each topic to fifteen minutes and each speaker to five. The floor is open.
My name is William Barnhart. I live at 373 McKellar Street, and this goes to you, Mayor. Why do we have our garbage trucks on the streets at six o'clock in the morning? I'm going down Hickory Street, heading north. The garbage truck's heading south, he's in the right-hand lane, and I'm in the right-hand lane. I can't even tell it's a garbage truck. Why are they out that early for?
There, there should be a time change coming up that's going to be announced to move that back to seven.
Well, I think that should have happened a long time ago.
But usually corresponds with the daylight savings time change.
That went in a good while ago. And the other thing is, how long's the Roger Moore thing going to drag through? This should have been settled a long time ago. I got a gut feeling that someone ended up costing the city money. Roger's going to get his job back. It's just unbelievable.
Because it's still an open case, I can't comment. Because it's still an open case, I can't comment.
Any other member of the audience wish to address the council? Okay. Next, bring up old business. Any council members have any old business they would just bring forward? Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. When we started talking about the streets and levees, and there was also something that I brought up and a few other people brought up, about the license plate tags, increasing that to help with the streets, a dedicated fund for the streets, which would be about 400,000 if we would go to the max. As we know, around here, we are on the lowest side of just about everything. You know, the percent of income tax paid, the amount we pay for our tags is very low compared to other municipalities. This would bring in about 400,000 dollars a year, which to me is nothing to sneeze at at all. I don't have access to all the information, but this in my little figuring, if we have that dedicated string, we would be able to get probably about a 3.5 million dollar loan, pay it off over about a ten-year period. 3.5 million, but that'd do it off of these streets right now. And I think it would show some leadership. I think that the people are waiting for some leadership. They're like, what are you going to do? We know, we know times are tough, but what are you going to do? We talked about trying to find some other strings for revenue. This is one we can't do. We can show leadership, say, hey, we think the people want the streets improved. This is a very direct user fee. If you, if you're paying it, because you're getting driver's license, so you're driving on the street, so it's very direct. I think it can help. I think it shows leadership. I think we really need to do that. I'll somewhat defer to the auditor and ask him about my figures about a 3.5 million dollar loan being repaid over four hundred, over 10 years. He's, he has done a very good job with the bundling and giving us some good interest rates, so, Mr. Feeney?
I have a question as specific, but I think the last time we borrowed, we did a million for 10 years, I think. We've done that twice now, and the approximate payment is 100,000. So the interest rates we got last year were 22 and 23%. So I'd say probably about accurate on 10 years.
Legislation request is coming.
Oh, well, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
Ask and you shall receive.
Yeah, you go.
I already knew you were going to ask.
That, that, I appreciate that. People say, I'm, I'm pretty easy to read. And that, that was my old business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Any other old business? Moving forward. Physicians and correspondents, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, I don't have anything to report on tonight, but I would mention to City Auditor Feeney that I happened to read an article in, I believe it was the Columbus Dispatch, to the effect that some official in Cincinnati is talking about litigation with respect to that municipal taxation ordinance. And I didn't know whether you and the Law Director might want to look into that as to whether they're, they're looking, seeking co-plaintiffs.
I appreciate that.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Excuse me, any new business? Mrs. Ames?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. I have handed out to council and members of the audience, I hope everybody got one, schedule of events for the Downtown Associates Christmas Open House and the Chillicothe Downtown Development Commission's Light Park. And this is going to kick off on Friday, November 21st, at 6:00 PM at the entrance to Yacht and She Park on Water Street. It's the official opening of the Christmas season, and there will be a brief dedication, official lighting of the park in County Courthouse and Christmas Street. There will be luminaries on Paint and Water Streets and on the Bridge in Yacht and She Park, the arrival of Santa and opening of Santa House, carriage rides through the downtown, and a performance by the Renaissance Singers. A committee of the Downtown Development Commission has been working since midsummer to make Light the Reality, Light the Park a reality.
The carriage rides are going to be downtown, starting at the Horizon Parking Lot. On Saturday, there's going to be a petting zoo at the Commons, that's the area in front of where Wesley Taylor was. All of these events are free to the public, but they're asking, for instance, the carriage rides, they're asking to bring food donations for the, for the court, for the, I'm sorry, yeah, food donations for them, and coats and gloves are being collected too at the Santa House. So anytime somebody comes, all of these things are, are free to the public. They're gonna have hot chocolate, different businesses are gonna be giving out hot chocolate and stuff throughout the holidays, and we're gonna keep updating these as we go. And this is something that we are stirring with this year and hope to build in the future and make a tradition for residents of Chillicothe.
Should have Dave Tenner in contact?
Dave Tenner or Gene Betts at the Chamber. If the event is taking place in the park, like, let's say Kuanis wants to have something at their shelter, then they do that through, through Dave. If it's gonna be downtown, then it's through Gene. So they're, but they, they will be, you know, discussing events back and forth so that it's all coordinated together. And that concludes my...
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Ames. Any other new business? Mr. Trutzel?
Mr. Reinhardt. The, this may not be new business, however, the private trash haulers that we, that we pick up in our city are not allowed to start picking up until six A.M. We had, a few years ago, they were picking up all night long around our nursing homes and things of that nature. And as you all know, these things make quite a racket, and they're restricted to six A.M. And so if our people are picking up at six A.M., that's kind of in the mode of picking up because in some situations, the dumpsters get blocked as the day progresses, there's more people out. So that's why they're picking up. We're trying to get them to cooperate with us in that respect. So if our guys are picking up at six, I don't see any problem with that unless they're making so much noise that it's disrupting neighborhoods.
Safety...
Yeah, usually it's safety with daylight. Typically, when the time changes, we change our hours. So I'll check with Mike tomorrow, see what happens.
Thank you, Tom. Any other new business? Moving forward. Committee assignments and meeting dates. It's our last legislative meeting, the following committee assignments have been made. Fourteen forty-five to the Development Committee, a request for legislation to do a budget adjustment in the CHIP grant FY two thousand fund, and that is item number four this evening. Fourteen dash forty-six to the Parks and Rec Committee, a request for legislation to accept the donation of thirty bags of fertilizer from Walmart. Fourteen dash one forty-seven to the Human Resources Committee, a request to amend ordinance sixty dash fourteen to extend the hiring period of two part-time workers from October thirty-first of two thousand fourteen through the winter. Fourteen dash one forty-eight to the Development Committee, a request for legislation to accept the reimbursement check from Edna Reed in the amount of three thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. That's all the committee assignments that have been made since our last legislative meeting. Next is legislation. Item number one.
Third reading of an ordinance designating a revitalization district within the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section forty-three oh one point eight-one and declaring emergency. Third reading.
Discuss that in the public hearing? Roll call?
Trutzel?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Prohl?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
That motion is adopted, the ordinance is adopted. Item number two.
Third reading of an ordinance amending Sections eleven fifty-one point zero-two and eleven fifty-one point zero-three of the codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe, Ohio. Third reading.
Roll call?
Trutzel?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Prohl?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. Item number three will not be read. Item number four.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating forty-seven hundred eighty dollars for the Housing and Urban Development Community Housing Improvement Program grant and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mrs. Ames?
I would to waive the three read rule, please.
Seconded by Mr. Trutzel. Motion on the floor to suspend the rules? Roll call?
Trutzel?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Prohl?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries, the or, or, excuse me, the rules will be suspended. Roll call on the ordinance?
Trutzel?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Prohl?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating sixteen thousand dollars for income tax refunds and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Trutzel?
Please just state another form, but let me make a motion to waive three read rule.
Okay, that will be seconded by Mrs. Ames. Motion on the floor to suspend the rules? Roll call?
Trutzel?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Prohl?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Okay. That motion carries, the rules will be suspended. Roll call on the ordinance?
Trutzel?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Prohl?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
That motion carries, the ordinance is adopted. Item number six.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the transfer of Parks and Recreation Capital Funds for costs related to the replacement of a damaged Parks and Recreation Desk and Computer and declaring emergency. First reading.
No further action on item six. Item number seven.
First reading of an ordinance reducing appropriations for the Nina Gardens Project and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mrs. Patrick?
I'd like to make motion to waive the three read rule.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Bonner. Motion on the floor to suspend the three read rule? Roll call?
Trutzel?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Prohl?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
That motion carries. Roll call on the ordinance?
Trutzel?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
Showman?
Yes.
Prohl?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Ames?
Motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. This is great.
Make a motion to adjourn, please.
Okay, I have a second. Seconded by Mr. Bonner. Before we adjourn, I might have to thank Ms. Teresa here from the Law Director's office. We don't already ever get a, a very well-dedicated employee that works with us very closely. Teresa, I wanna thank you in person for all your hard work in the last-minute request, and you do an excellent job, and we collectively appreciate everything you do for us. Now roll call on... Didn't mean to embarrass you, but you're sitting right in front of me. Roll call?